I don't think I can put this, it says that wouldn't recognize that for my audio. So let's see. Hello, can you hear me? Hi Craig, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. How are you doing?
I'm doing okay. So yeah, once we start the meeting then I will mute you. But I tried to do it with the headphones so that way I'd have a microphone, but it wouldn't recognize it. So I'm hoping everyone will hear me okay.
I can hear you fine right now.
Okay. How are you doing with Ken and Gerald connected? It says I have you admitted and I have Craig right now. Well, you've had a busy day, huh?
Who, me?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so far. You'll see that I've got two.
Yeah, I see that. One for audio.
Twice. That's so that I can, it won't allow me to record on my iPad. And my desktop does not have a microphone or a camera. So I'm on my iPad to be part of the meeting and I'm on my desktop to record it.
Okay, yep. I have, I have both of you up on my screen, so that should be good. Ann's gonna be joining us here. She's there now. So either today or else tomorrow, I need to dig out the noxious weed ordinance. And if we're getting to that lovely time of the year to publish in the paper again, I'll be getting that over to you.
Okay.
Whoop, I lost Ann. I don't know where she went. She was with us. Bob, are you back in your office, Bob? Can you hear us back there? Okay. Okay. How's Gerald coming? Cause I don't have him yet. Okay. Hi Ann, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can. So that's.
Alright, that's good.
Right now we have Craig with us. I'll mute him once we start the meeting. He'll still be able to hear us. But, and I think my grand check's gonna join us. So the public will be muted through the meeting and then when we go for public comment. And I want to do that right now too, is I'm going to put a message out to everyone.
Okay.
Hopefully this makes sense as I'm typing away. I just wanted to let the public know. To let you know in the chat if they have questions, so I can unmute them one at a time. So we're not having everyone trying to speak at once. Okay Gerald, you should be coming online. I hit the admit button. Yep, okay, we got Gerald now. I do know that Laurissey contacted us here at City Hall and said she was gonna be unable to make it today. But outside of that, we should have everyone. Yep, I have the mayor. I have the mayor, I have Ann, we have Craig, and I have you. Yeah. You can see my English is really good there in that chat, F1. Yeah. If you want to try, it wouldn't, you need to use the headset if it didn't recognize. Or if you want to open a new one, that's up to you. Well, it's there on the sidebar. I'm assuming that, I'm assuming they're talking to that.
Whoever's crumpling something, that's coming over, over top of everything else. I think it's you Dawn, whether you or Ann, you're the only ones that aren't muted, but yeah, really loud.
Okay. I don't think that it was me. I just handed Bob the headset, but there was no paper or anything. But you never know. I'll mute myself and see if it continues.
Yeah, it's Ann. Every time it happens, her picture comes up as primary.
Okay. So Ann, I guess if you could mute yourself, well, you're on, no, are you on your phone or computer? I don't know if you have the capability.
I'm on my cellphone. I'm on my cellphone and I don't see that button to mute me down there.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure how that'll go. Becky's joining us. Does anyone else know, like, if she turns the volume button down would that work or no? We got Sheri and Mike joining us. Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't. I'm trying to see.
Can anybody hear me?
Hi Chris, yep, I got you.
Okay, I'll mute it.
Alright, thank you sir. Oh. I know I was admitting Sheri. I still don't see her on my screen. Oh, let's see. Sheri, are you there? Hey everyone, I'm just, I don't know what's happening with Sheri. I have her on screen. It says joining, but she hasn't popped up yet. Um, to repeat to everyone, Laurissey has called and said she will not be able to join us. So I believe the only other person we're waiting for is Brian. So like Bob said, at this point, we do have a forum. And here's, Brian's coming in now. So Brian's here. So in case you haven't yet, please mute your speakers unless you're trying to speak at the time. I think, I think Ann's the only one that we can't mute. I don't hear. Does anyone else get in a bad echo? Okay. Alright, can, I believe Sheri's connecting now. Could I just have Sheri and Brian let me know or speak so I can make sure that I have you connected? Didn't allow me to unmute you yet, so I just want to make sure you're not prohibited from speaking. So Brian, can you hear and speak to us? Sheri, can you speak or no?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, I can, thank you. And then Brian, I'm sorry, can you speak?
Yeah, can you hear me? This is Brian.
Yep, I can hear everyone now. So right now, all council members should be unmuted. But mute your own so that while we're talking, we're not getting echoes. For public, we have Craig from the Journal and Commissioner Grantcheck. Those two are muted until such a time as public comment. Um, so I just would like to remind you to keep your microphones muted until you have to make a motion second or vote. The mayor's going to lead us. He's gonna start the meeting off by calling it to order. Then, once he does that, I will do roll call and then from there out, it will be the mayor speaking, okay?
Okay.
Hey Gerald, you are author. Call the meeting to order.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at 2:30. Roll call, please.
Here.
Ann?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll try and get closer. Councilwoman Becter?
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Keeney?
I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Keeney? Okay, thanks bro. Councilwoman Saha?
Here.
Um, let me see if I'm not missing anyone. And Mayor Gibson?
Here.
Okay. The woman forward, like I said, called and actually was talking to me, so I will mark her. I am done, mayor, thank you.
The opening ceremony, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The approval of the agenda.
I'll make a.
Motion, oh, sorry, go ahead Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda with a second. Any discussion? Vote please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to unmute our public for public comment on agenda items only. As I said, I believe our public is Commissioner Grantcheck, Craig from the Journal, and we also have Amy from the office. Just give me a moment to unmute you and we will get started, okay? Hey, unfortunately, I did unmute all of you at once, but if you could just, I'll ask, is there any public comment on the agenda? I'm sorry, and I should have had the mayor. My apologies.
Public comment on the agenda item.
Okay, Commissioner Grantcheck? I'm sorry.
I have a comment. I believe that as you're taking votes and stuff, being via Zoom, that you have to do roll call votes on everything. We got a thing at the county from the state, and that's what their recommendation is. Just thought I'd throw that out there for your information. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I believe the mayor, and I did have that set up, correct, Mayor Gibson? That we had roll call under all the new. Right. Hey Bob, I'm asking you to remind everyone that we do only have 40 minutes. Mayor, if you want to back forward, I'm gonna turn off my mic.
We're gonna back up to the approval of the agenda with the votes. We need a roll call vote. I thought that's what you meant.
Commissioner Grant, since I still have public open, I think we are safe in not having a roll call on just the approval of the agenda. But all items of business will be roll call votes. Hey mayor, go ahead when you're ready. Like I said, I'm turning off my speaker again.
Okay, number six, correspondence, we don't have anything. Seven presentations, we don't have anything. The approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Go ahead, mayor.
We have support of the consent agenda and a second. Any discussion? If no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Saha? Councilwoman Saha, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
You're really, really jumbled up there Dawn, hard to hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak. Are you yellow or navy? I guess I'll go for yellow.
Yeah, Dawn, you're.
Hey, hey Dawn, I can't hear you.
I only hear bits and pieces.
Yep, same here.
Same here, I'm not hearing much.
Well, I could, okay, can you hear me at this point? I'll try and, okay, I'll try and project better. Cause I couldn't put the microphone, the computer wasn't recognizing it. Councilwoman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Report?
Yes.
Councilwoman Becter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Coria?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney?
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson?
Yes. Okay, we have an approval of the consent agenda passed. Does anyone have anything on committee reports?
I don't have anything, but I have a couple of questions for Mr. Moffett.
I have no committee meeting reports.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report here.
I'm not sure that Bob is able to join us verbally. I don't, Bob, I don't know if he can hear. Bob, did you hear a question? Sheri, Mr. Moffett, if he can hear you, I guess he'll relate to me. Okay. The question is, can we save the questions, our questions till the end?
Dawn, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying really hard to project.
Okay. No. No committee reports to report. 10 unfinished business, we have nothing. And new business, A, the budget adoption with a roll call vote. Ah?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we had to open public hearing.
Okay, let's back up. I need to have a motion on a public hearing for the budget.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the adoption of fiscal year 2021 budget for City Pin County.
I'll support.
Yep. Okay, once again people, I'm gonna try my best. Public hearing, Councilwoman Coria?
Can you repeat that?
Or Becky Coria?
Vote to open the public hearing?
Here, yes, yes, sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, it's all new for us. Councilwoman Saha?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney? Councilwoman Keeney?
Yes.
Councilwoman Becter?
Uh, yes.
Sorry. Councilwoman Report?
Yes.
Okay. You probably couldn't hear, but Mayor Gibson said yes.
Yes, went on mute for me. Alright, do we have any public comment on the budget?
Commissioner Grantcheck does, just to make.
Go ahead, Mike.
I have, I have one question, thank you. The $46,000 retirement, which was the same as last year, does that keep us on track with the state and our retirement deficit and all that? Does it keep the city on track with the, with the plan?
He can't hear you. Gerald's microphone's muted. Bob is trying to speak just like.
Are you there, Commissioner Mike?
I am, thank you.
Yeah, that's a target number, but we know it's not big enough. We know the lapse last year was 165,000 underfunded. The number got that much bigger. So as we have made some changes in staffing and some cost cutting measures, we hope to increase that number, but that's kind of the starting date number that we certainly would like to see that much bigger by the time we have actual numbers there in about a year and a half.
Okay, very good. But I mean, it's a, it's a plan that you folks are working on to try and, you know, at least mitigate the deficits every year, correct?
We have to do a better job to help the people who are already retired from the city and those that are hoping to retire from the city. So for both sides of that street, we need to do a better job.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
All right, sir.
I want to let everyone know as host, it just popped up on my screen that Zoom is allowing us to go past our 40-minute limit.
Can we adjourn the meeting?
Any other public comment on the budget? No other public comment, the budget? We need a motion to close with a roll call.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing on the budget.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the budget.
I'll support.
Roll call vote. Councilwoman LaPorte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Betcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrier.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes. Budget adoption, we need a motion and approval.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the City of Pin County as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, once again, Councilwoman Corrier.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaPorte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Betcher.
No.
Councilperson Saha.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes. A motion is accepted and passed. B, Northern Bay Ambulance for the ordinance, for the special assessment. Need an approval.
This is, this is a draft. Does this have to go through a public notice process?
It does, and we need it for our summer taxes.
Well, just a clarification, if we have to go through a public notice on this to present it and then vote on it. Don, can you comment? Or Bob?
Okay, I'm sorry, and I'm hoping everyone can hear me. What this is, the reason it says draft is it's the draft until council approves it. Then once council approves it, it goes to the Journal for Publication, and then 10 days after publication, it comes into effect. We do not, from our attorney standpoint, we do not need a public hearing on it.
Okay, and just, just to be clear, the $35 per parcel, assessed value on the, per parcel, basically. Any, this is summary of any changes from our current policy by the administration. If you could relay, relay what, what was changed in, in this new policy. Yep.
Okay, so the number had to increase from last year. The other communities. All have, the other communities all have an escrow. We're collecting enough that there'd be about $2,000 to start an account. That's about $2,000 more than last year's purchase. And but we were not keeping up. Brian, it's a slight increase from last year. We were under collecting.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that. I guess the question came up to the multi, multi-unit parcels if we're going to be charging them differently than basically the one assessed parcel with multiple unit.
Correct, Brian. When it came to incorporating that, it's moving us to one fee per parcel to one fee per resident.
Okay, you're a little muffled there, Don, again.
Okay, sorry about that. So, correct, our previous policy was that each parcel paid one fee, and this new one is moving it from one parcel to a fee per resident. So if you have 60 residents on a parcel, each parcel gets a flat bad value.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 220-0506, City of Pin County, Bay County, Michigan, First Amendment to the ambulance service ordinance number 2006-01 as presented.
I'll support.
Councilman Keeney. Chris, do you vote yea or nay? Councilman Saha. Can everyone hear me? I'm sorry. I'm really trying.
I can hear you.
No.
Um, I can't. You're really muffled.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm trying to get close. The roll call's not. Nope.
No, that's not better.
Okay. Could I have you respond in the chats, I guess, voting yea or nay? I am recording this, so we would have it in written form.
Yes for Brian Saha.
Yes for Ann LaPorte.
Yes for Sherri Betcher.
Yeah.
Yes for Rebecca Corrier.
Yes for the mayor. Motion is passed with a roll call vote for Northern Bay Ambulance. Fee, 1% administration fee on the taxes. Need a motion and a second.
Questions, once again, this was clarified by the attorney, but I guess I asked this question several times in the past, and I thought we could not collect administration fee.
No, Brian, we're the only ones, I think, in the whole state for sure, the only ones. Yeah, you can hear me.
Yep, I can, I can hear you at least. No, I can't hear any longer.
Okay. That, we've checked, and everybody in the county is collecting that 1%. And we pay the county $5,000 for printing and mailing and postage on the summer taxes, and we pay a small fee of the winter taxes. This doesn't even cover the fees to the county or the staff time for handling it. We really need to do this as just part of fixing the budget.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. This was a question raised in the past, why we weren't doing it. And anyway, that's a idea that should have been done years prior.
I agree. This is part of trying to make the money better. So I'm asking for your support, and I think we could just vote on this and move ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to pass a 1% administration fee for a collection of taxes.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, roll call vote.
Could I have the mayor to leave since people can't hear me and I'll record on?
Sir, Brian Saha, yes.
Roll call.
Sherri Betcher, yes.
They're doing that on their own. They're good.
Ann LaPorte, yes.
Rebecca Corrier, yes.
Chris Key.
Mayor, just me, the mayor now.
Yes. Want to say that matters, administration fee on taxes is passed. D, approval of assessor's contract, Bernie Weaver.
I didn't get anything from you for, you were gonna look, yeah, and then.
I didn't see that contract in our packets. Are we gonna be able to look at that?
Bernie's a level four. We're paying Mike 1050 a month. We're gonna pay Bernie 1100 a month. We had about $200 in setup fees, and there'd be a couple hundred dollars a month while sharing on a laptop. He's ready to go.
Motion, it's, we need a motion and support. Again, it's a $50 a month change, and we're moving up three levels in a skill set.
Okay, that was, that was my question on the skill set, so. I'll make a motion to approve new assessor contract with Bernie Weaver for the fiscal year 2020, 21, or beginning May 1st.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support for approval of the assessor's contract, Bernie Weaver. Any further discussion? Roll call. I need, I need a roll call. Just give your names as you've been doing.
Brian Saha, yes.
Chris.
Ann LaPorte, yes.
Rebecca Corrier, yes.
Sherri Betcher, yes.
Mayor Gibson, yes. New assessor contract, pass. E, the appointment of Bob Moffett to the Fire and Ambulance Board.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Moffett to Fire and Ambulance Board.
I'll support, Brian.
We have a motion and support for Mr. Moffett to be on the Fire Board and Ambulance Board. Roll call vote, please.
Brian Saha, yes.
Ann LaPorte, yes.
Sherri Betcher, yes.
Rebecca Corrier, yes.
Chris, Booney.
Chris Key.
You're not coming in, Chris. You must have to get closer or something.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. That was good. And Mayor, yes. The appointment of Mr. Moffett to the Fire and Ambulance Board. F, water tower purchased by Bay County Water Department. We need a support and roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve this sale of the personal property and real property city owns to the Bay County Board of Road Commissioners for the water tower and the water tower property that the City of Pin County has interest in via the quick claim bill of sale for the personal property and real property as presented in our packets.
I'll support.
Any further discussion?
Just one point, that Exhibit A wasn't in our packets, but that all been reviewed by your attorney?
Bob said he reviewed it, and everything's good. Okay, sale of the water tower purchase, pass.
Oh, we gotta vote.
We gotta do a roll. Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Brian Saha, yep, sorry.
Ann LaPorte, yes.
Sherri Betcher, yes.
Rebecca Corrier, yes.
Chris Key.
The mayor, yes. Okay, number 12, gonna open it up to public comment.
I believe I have everyone unmuted to speak unless you have yourself muted. Public comments open if you can hear me.
I, I have a question for the mayor and the council. In December, you approved a six-month temporary contract with Mr. Moffett to serve as city manager. Four months of that time is gone. I have not noted anything on the council agenda or any committee meetings regarding either hiring a full-time manager or, or, excuse me, a permanent manager or negotiating with Mr. Moffett to be the full-time manager. Has anything been done to find the city a permanent city manager?
I'd like you to speak.
Hey, Craig, this is Bob, and I hope it's okay that I answer your question.
Well, I really think it's a question for the mayor and the council.
Okay. We have till July 15th. And with the virus going on and the situations we're into right now. And with the virus going on and the situations we're into right now, not a lot of discussions been made of it, but I do believe that it will continue probably month for month at this point with council's approval.
Can we table it up to June's payment or June, um, meeting?
How can you table a public comment question?
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct.
Okay, any other public comment? Or Craig, did I answer your question?
Uh, yeah, I guess, if, if that's, if that's all the information there is, then I guess that's the answer, yes.
Okay. Any other public comment? With no further public comment, I believe we had one closing the public comment. We had one comment from who? For Sheri, to Bob.
It wasn't really a comment. It was, it was just a question I wanted to ask Mr. Moffett. As I'm sitting here looking through our packets, one from March and one from today, I see back, I mean, I'm sorry, one from February. We used to have, I'm sorry, March, used to have a CD sitting at Chemical Bank for 162, 897, 52. That is no longer there. Where did that money go?
I'm sorry, could you hear me, Sheri? They're having a good time.
Yes.
Back in March, it was all coordinated.
I, I can't hear you right now.
Yeah, it was all coordinated with Don and myself and the mayor, and that CD was cashed and deposited at an independent bank in the general fund to make sure we had enough money to pay the bills in June, because we were that concerned about paying bill. My old friend has part of that money in July, once we get past our tight point, which is late June for money.
Okay, I have another question. Um, since Captain Spencer's been approved, you know, to come back to work, I'm just wondering why he's only working two days a month?
Because our department is currently staffed at one part-time position, and until we have a millage or some other way in place to pay for a policeman, we're gonna have to get used to very few hours and leaning on the neighbors.
But, but when Captain Spencer is off, he was paid for six months by workman's comp. Shouldn't there have been extra money in the budget?
Um, now, what over 200,000's gone to water and sewer, Sheri. This year, over 200,000 water and sewers eaten out of general fund. You had 130,000 for police department budget. The increase of debt to MERS was plus 165 the same last fiscal year. Something had to change, and I was hired to balance the budget. So that's what's been going on, and right now we have one part-timer, and I believe you said you'd help with millage activity. Changed that, so.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering, you know, with the, you know, officers are essential workers right now with this COVID-19, you know, crime rate, shoplifting, you know, people are gonna do what they can to try to support their family, whether, you know, they steal it or do it on, you know, do it the right way.
I understand and respect your concerns, but please understand we also have a shared building. So even Terry has concerns about being out there right now. These are all tough issues. We have to deal with the money and all these things. So we'll keep at it, and we'll do the best I can. I appreciate you asking, Sheri, and I appreciate being open to conversations around these issues, because we're gonna have to continue to talk about these things.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll adjourn the meeting.
I'll support.
We need a roll call vote.
Brian Saha, yes.
Ann Laporte, yes.
Sheri Batcher, yes.
Rebecca Koyer, yes.
Yes.
Chris.
And the mayor, yes. Motion was passed, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
Yep, you too. Everybody be safe.
Yep, same here. Thank you, guys.